Call this work session to order. Can you call it off?
Jennifer Harden, Addison, Linda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
Here.
Lori Christie.
Here.
Jack Nelly's house.
Yes.
Okay. Well, we just entered and started our work session here, so I guess we'll turn the floor to Scott, and we had you up on the screen and kind of walk us through, kind of recap what we talked about at the finance meeting, go over current cost of the second phase of Silas Plan, and I printed off the
Do you want to pull up the?
I'll pull up.
So, I mean, I think all of you know that COVID has really affected the cost of things recently. It's not that good. I think it's a lot of people protecting themselves, a lot of that kind of situation where their contractors are not going to get into a situation where they're in a bidding bidding projects that are two, three years out. So, we're dealing with a lot of that. So, we have our cost updates, 2019, the original costs, 2021, early, and then kind of the COVID projections of 147 is where we're at right now. Just for your reference, where we're at, and I understand it's, there's some ticket shock value to that, but I think it's necessary so that we don't get into a situation where we are going to the community and underselling. Do I think this is 100% where we're going to be? I don't know. I can't tell you. This, I feel like this is a very inflated number, just because so many contractors are being so protective of where their numbers are. But this is weird. We just have to be 100% honest with the district of where the numbers we are seeing right now. So, going forward, this is where it is, and from what we understand, the bond capacity can handle it. There are things that you could do after the fact if you want to move forward to kind of deal with if we ever had our overrun. Maybe that's just as too much, you can come back down. But this is where we are, and we want to make sure that we are 100% apparent with the district.
Just, I think during the finance meeting, it was discussed that these numbers are based on what your experience with another school district, correct?
But, but that is, those are like real CMR numbers where they're protecting themselves because they don't know what's going to happen.
Okay.
Are they under construction yet?
No.
When was, so the district that you're referring to, when, when was their levy passed?
Cheryl, do you remember that one?
Yeah, that was 2000, it was 2019. They were under the CFAT, the main program, and COVID shut the co-funding down last year. So, they've kind of been held in flux since November of 2019. But yes, those are the budget, that, they were funded under 2019 budgets, and design came in $20 million over those 2019 budgets.
So, it, it, I mean, it goes back to the whole CFAT versus, oh, let's see, CC funding too, where you can move forward versus they're not able to.
So, so I guess, so the levy that had passed in 2019, does it cover the delta here on the?
I mean, based that, based on what they're getting, it's not, but that's a lot of fears. I think this is, is this SD or DD, as that's Cheryl?
It was SD, and the cost per square foot was about 335 at the end of SD.
So, that's schematic design. So, that's early in the process. And we, it, people, we literally do not know what's going on with all the, just, you know, we get materials. It's just a.
We had some other projects that are further along in design that are in CD now, and we had estimates for them last month as well, and they were more at $350 a square foot, which is even higher than what we put here. However, those are smaller schools, so economies of scale is working against them.
So, I think one of the things that I continue to consider when we're looking at these numbers, even if, even that we're looking at 147, 148, you know, the longer we push this project out into the future, the higher the cost update gets anyway. We did this, when did we do our original estimate? Was 2000, is that the 2019? So, when we did this in 2019, and we said, hey, if we're not going to go on the ballot, we're going to, until November, we need to add in another X percentage for cost updates that are going to come in that we didn't, that we didn't have at that point in time because we were using the state dollar numbers. And so, every, every, every period of time that we continue to move this out, the number gets bigger regardless of whether or not those cost increases are in there, you know, over, overinflated for COVID factors and, you know, construction, things that are going on in the market. I just think that that number is just going to continue to get bigger. It's never going to get any smaller, and I just want to point that out because that 126 to 135, that's just time. That wasn't really even COVID so much as that was time, right?
Yes, from the 126, yes, that is time.
Right, because we, we talked about that previously, correct?
Two years at 4%, that's what that is. And we, we've had a strong market in that type of thing. And that's, that's more of what you expect in a strong market, four, 5% inflation. But right now, we're in kind of different charted territory, to be honest. Now, if I'm going to make the argument to go to the bond, I've dealt with districts that went to the bond in the 2008 to 2013 range, when everybody, everybody, everything was down, nobody went to it. There is an opportunity there, like, so maybe it continues to grow up, go up. You will not be at a disadvantage if you go out now. Let's say everything just comes to a halt. Right now, you will save money versus what we're showing right now, because that is the same thing that's happened. I worked with Brooklyn, is one of the school districts I worked with. I think we came in way under expectations on this cost per square foot because they went out in that 2008 through 2013 period. There is an advantage to a district if it ever just went bad to going out then. I'm, I'm just putting that out there.
And you're saying, you're alluding to, because there, nobody else is going out there in that, that you?
You save money.
You save money because there's more availability of resources than?
But again, if you wait, and let's just say that it keeps going up and everything's good, you wait, you're going to keep, the costs are going up. I don't see any advantage to wait, in my opinion.
So, so, we talked about this at the finance meeting, that say we go out for 148, you know, we put that out there and it passes, for example. If it comes in less, Mike, you can address this because I'll probably like not say this appropriately, but at the end of the day, we don't, we get the money, but we can always refinance, we can always give back, we can always, we can do other things with the dollars, or, you know, we sufficiently word our levy wording so that we can use it for the middle school, we can do other things. We don't have to take all the money. We can, like, there are opportunities, and there's other things that we can do. If you guys can address some of that, because I think that was the concern, like, what if we don't need all that money, and what if we've overestimated, which would not be a bad thing.
Sure. Now, you can go out on your ballot initiative and put a, a number, again, say it's 148 million that we're seeing here. If, there's a couple of different approaches there then, as the bids come in, and you do come in well under what you were passed at before we issue, then we can always keep and retain in reserve, if you will, the ability to issue that debt down the road if need be, but you are approved by the voters for 148 million, you get bids in, you only need 135 million, we issue 135 million. Then the opposite, if we don't get bids in in time and we want to hit the market because interest rates are attractive, which they are, we do issue 148 million, bids come in well in under 148 million. You do want to present yourself and give yourself the flexibility under legislation resolution to make certain that those funds can be utilized outside the main scope of the master plan. The last thing you want to be able to, you really don't want to be in a situation where you issue debt and you have nothing to spend it on. That creates a major problem. We would have to get into an IRS rebate situation calculation. There would be ultimate penalties there. But with, I think it's easily remedied with broad ret legislation from your bond council to make certain, certain, there's a big list of improvements and recommendations across the district that can be brought under that legislative umbrella upon passage of resolution, that there are extra funds because of this exaggerated CMR bid, which, you know, they have to, you know, they're at risk for, so they have to protect themselves. We can take care of that.
Right.
So, let me, let me question, or ask you a question. So, in, in this scenario you just described where, where, you know, we went off for 148, and we only need 135, and there's 12, and then a future board decided to, to access that 12. So, initially, so there would be, there would be, on the initial assessment to the taxpayer, it would be 135, then there would be an increase if that extra, that additional 12 million was accessed?
So, more than likely, that's exactly what happened. More, let's say you only came in, you only issued the 135, you had that $13 million left over, and after a few years, you decided that there was a need for a capital expansion somewhere. You still have that authorization to issue that debt. Then you would start to assess. You will only need to assess for what is commensurate with the debt service under the issuance of the debt. If the number, whole number we're looking at, just to throw it out there, is six mils, you only issue its requisite of five mils. That's all we're going to assess. But you do have the right to assess that additional mil without an additional vote. The benefit of that is by the time though that would come around and your taxable value would have increased, the effective millage that you will have to assess will be much less than what the initiative passed.
Right. And the, on the negative side, though, we'd be building something that the voters didn't necessarily approve either. So, so that's, because then it was all about, you know, in this scenario, the six through 12.
First duty.
And then that would be?
Well, they would have to know because we'd have to put it in the bond language. So, whatever we would spend on would have to be in the bond language. They would have to approve it. You know what I mean?
But it would be definitive, though. It's, you, you talk about some nebulous language about, you know, other?
Like a bus garage, or?
Okay.
Whatever.
It'd have to be specific.
Right.
And I think we can come up with legislation that could be broad, yet specific. I, I know that sounds dichotomous, but it's a good, a, a good example. Put potential improvements, and then we can list off a litany of facilities that we know that the district has that's going to need improvement. There's always a need for windows, there's always a need for roofs, the bus garage, maintenance center, parking lots. We can list that all within the legislation and on the ballot initiative. So, that way, if something were to come up after the fact, two or three years later, and you did decide one of the facilities needed a new roof or a, a new parking lot, it was listed under the ballot language.
Or if you stick to our plan that we had as far as facilities, and that's probably what is working on the moof, right? So, we could go and add that because the money that, the refund, we never know when we're actually going to get the refund from the state to start that war.
So, you know, based on Lori's saying, is we know phase three would be renovating the moof with OFCC money, but we're in the help program. We don't know when we'll actually run those funds. And so, you could proceed, when, you know, phase two was completed, you could proceed with phase three using these funds. And then when we actually qualify for the funding, the, if the OFCC has said, if you've already finished your, your master plans, they will just cut you a check for your credit, you put it in your debt retirement fund, refinance your debt, your tax rate will go down on that, on that ongoing levy. It was pay off, you know, I think our credits may be, what, 13 million-ish. I mean, that's, that's all going to change over time with inflation and everything, but, you know, they'll give us the funds and then we'll put it towards the debt. So, that is an option, you know, if we got there, but.
A rare circumstance where the state's delays could actually work into your strategy quite nicely, because it really pinpoints exactly your concern. You don't want to come back to your taxpayers and say, we're doing something that you really didn't vote for or wasn't really highlighted. That moof now really is your bleed valve, and it's a perfect scenario. You have extra money from the bond initiative, you accelerate the phase three construction, and then you just work under the ELP guidelines to get the money from the state when your time is up.
And the other option is, if we just, if we only issue a certain amount of debt, we could just stop.
Right.
And just absolutely stop right there, and, you know, we didn't issue as much as we said we were, and we're not going to.
So, the higher this project goes, the more money the state has to give us back under the plan as well, like, right, I mean, technically, percentage-wise, I mean?
What is an OFCC fund?
Only if we overbuild by estimating, so long as it comes to fruition though, right?
Oh, I mean, yeah. I mean, these numbers that we have are built outside of that. Like, we don't want you to assume you're going to get all of that, even though you might think you're going to. We don't want that to be an assumption. Like, because you, it's just not, you have what the OFCC will fund. But I, I understand that because I grew up in the district, and I know that it can get large at times, and I, I see the growth in the district too. So, I don't think you're off that this is going to grow, so.
So, how long is that, that, again, you swing back to that scenario, we have 12 or 13 million dollars. Is that available for the life of the?
There's a sunset on that, but it's quite extensive, and we'll find that out from bond counsel. It's, that, that eligibility does not last in perpetuity. So, but it does last quite a while. As a matter of fact, I think I may have even mentioned at the last finance committee meeting, we just, last year, issued about $2 million in eligible ballot initiative bonds from a 1999 Warren City Schools election.
Is that long?
Yeah, so.
Did they wait, or did they finally get on CFAT?
No, they simply, when they issued that, they could not afford it back in 99. They had, from the vote and from the, the preparation for the bond initiative, by the time, and I'm sadly showing my age because I was on that original issue, and I've refinanced it three times. What happened is they realized in the scope of the cert, of the, the project, that their AV was not going to work in conjunction with their needs, so they had to scale it back.
Were they CFAT in 99?
Yes. Yes.
Sorry, what is AV?
Assess valuation, taxable value. That's the driving number upon which we have been performing our analysis and calculations for what millage number we would put on the ballot.
Did we get a better number?
We were pretty close.
Yeah, well, let me pass out this one. Michael will walk through that. It's, it's slightly updated.
And we were in the market today with a $61 million Lodsworth City School issue. It priced today 41 million, and that was a tax exempt new money issue, and it went for 30 years. And the, what we call the tick, the true interest cost on that transaction was 3.16%.
And that's really good.
It's exceptional. That's an exceptional rate. That's for a 30-year piece with a very aggressive prepayment clause at five years in it. So, from here until May to the election, a lot can happen in the market. But to echo the architect sentiment, the same applies with inflationary costs. You add on top of that what's going to happen in the interest rate market. The Fed announced and affirmed just yesterday that they are scaling back their buyback program, that they are not going to be as large of a participant in the interest rate markets, and that they are effectively going to push for two increases to the federal funds overnight target rate in 2022, whereas six months ago, 2022 wasn't even on the calendar for rate increase. This is all to combat what is out of control inflationary increases.
Do you, do you have any idea when you, when you think those might hit? Third quarter, maybe, second?
I definitely think it's going to be later in the year. You're not going to see it in the first, or I think second quarter. If it's second quarter, it's going to be late second quarter. They have, there's too much to be seen with what inflation's going to do before they can really start to pump that. But the English Bank, the English Commonwealth Bank just announced for UK an increase in their target rate, yes, today.
So, what is your, what fiscal year are you using when you say third quarter?
I am using calendar year 2022. So, that would be first half of year fiscal '23.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood.
Understood.
And we'd have to be using that type of interest rate to figure out our millage kind of an estimate, because we're not going to go to, we're not going to go to market till April of the following year almost.
Well, if you were to pass this initiative in May, I would recommend a preparation, because we have a disclosure right now that is, is actually ready to go out, because we are keeping an eye on a refinancing opportunity. If we were to decide to go out in May, it would be my suggestion to Gary that we undertake having that disclosure prepared for immediate takeoff upon approval of the May ballot, which could put you in short-term note possibility of getting funded within weeks of the ballot. For a portion of what is required to get going. You got to have that money in the bank to sign the contracts. Your bond counsel is flexible to doing a short-term borrowing on that, and there's a myriad of strategies will apply. One of which you'll hear me over this time now up and through May is a bank qualified status, which I don't know if we're going to be able to implement properly for your issue, but there is thought that there is going to be a change in the bank qualified status from $10 million in a calendar year of issuance up to $30 million. But regardless, even if we were to, we could be in the market locking in long-term rates. If you were to pass in May, I would say first week of June.
That would be for the interest rates?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good to know.
Yeah.
Do you want to walk us through, because I know we have multiple scenarios?
Certainly.
Different interest rates, different years. I would recommend we just stick to 37 years, like what we did for the, the first phase of the project.
Okay.
So, I think that would be helpful, just to kind of?
You got it.
Have apples and apples.
So, the matrix on the top anticipates a bond issue from the lowest of 85 million all the way up through $155 million. If you go to the left side of that axis, just focus on the top three numbers of 37 years. That's going to be the maximum maturity more than likely we'll undertake for legislative purposes and for the ballot language. In order to achieve the proper millage level four, that we have to assume an interest rate by which we would conduct a calculation that would assume no growth in your taxable value, which is currently at $1.308 billion for the life of the loan. 4% all the way to the right at the top of that individual column, I think, is a very conservative assumption right now, given that I just told you 30-year paper for a AA2 credit in Lodsworth Schools went for 3.16%. I think we could actually be a little bit aggressive and look at something between the 3.75 and the 4% assumption. Then if you follow those two rows all the way over from 85 to $155 million, the corresponding number in there would be your county auditor calculated ballot millage number. So, for 150, rounding it up just a couple more million, at 37 years and assumed interest rate of 3 and 3/4% percent, we would estimate putting on the ballots a millage rate of 5.31 mils. I would like to state to everyone, though, mind you, at 5.31 mils, it is very, very unlikely through the life of the loan that you will have that level be constant. You may see it, and your taxpayers may see it on a duplicate for the first two to three years of during construction while we stabilize funds in the bond retirement account. But once your assessed value starts to increase, that millage gets rolled back. We passed the first one.
Back in 2016, if you recall, that bond issue was at 1.92 mil levy, and I believe they, they collect that the first year because that's, you know?
It's just the baseline.
It's the baseline. And I think the following year, we dropped to 1.67, I think it was, and then 1.56, and I think they bumped it up to like 1.58 this past year, which was 200s of a mill, which is pretty small. They actually, and now with the reevaluation, this coming year is going to be 1.3 with the valuation increase, so.
Right, it's a half, it's a, it's a half a mil already.
Over half a mil in a very short time.
I guess I, maybe I am, I am, I'm, because I need to be reacquainted. So, I, I understand with, with the, the reassessment going on about inside millage, the reason that our assessment goes up that it affects this, the only thing that should affect the, the relative rate of, of, of millage should be new, new construction. It shouldn't be the assessment.
It's the, it's, the gross rate and effective rate on a bond issue is, is the same. So, as your valuations go up, your tax rate does come down, because basically what happens is the, the auditors, so when they, when we, when we actually issue the bonds, we have to send the county auditor's office the debt service schedule. So, they're only going to assess the amount we need to pay the outstanding debt. So, you know, at the first year, they assessed the entire 1.92 mils, you know, the, the 2016 level, because they didn't really know what the debt was going to, you know, we're still going to issue the debt. So, once that debt was issued with the new tax valuation the following year, they'll get what, what, what amount do we need to make our debt payments, and they adjust that millage rate each year. So, as valuations go up, that tax rate doesn't go down. As new construction occurs, and, you know, it increases the district's valuation, that tax rate will drive down as well.
In addition, we refinanced, which helped us as well. Like, and we were going to go for a second refinance, and we didn't do it.
Just to make sure I'm, I'm fully tracking. So, in an operational levy, that would not apply.
Right.
So, operational levy, your assessment wouldn't affect your relative taxation. It 'd only be new construction. But because there are more variables here and, and refinancing all the things, assess, because you're, you're moving along, your assessment, your assessed value has an impact. Okay, all right, I did, I just, I, you know, it's?
Yeah, an operational levy is your assessed value does nothing but generate an effective millage level that is not subject to House Bill 920, which is the rollback. If for whatever reason we were to decide at 5.31 mils to assess that for five years, and the district's taxable value was to have increased by 10% by then, you would have excess funds, collections, in excess of your required debt service that would be accumulated in the district's bond retirement.
There's just more, there's, because it's, it's a, it's a living thing, basically, where, where we're trying to take advantage of the market, timing and other things. And there's still, even though we're, we're now fairly well established in the, in the, in the schools we built, there are still different things that come into play that kind of reset the, the assessment, if you will.
Okay. As, you know, as there's more construction in our community, you know, the new homes, like the Fairway Pines and the Encore, and those developments have been exploding these past couple of years, that's actually saving the rest of the taxpayer money.
Right, because there's more people that are. Right, okay.
Right, and we can't, we can't collect more than we need to pay off the debt service. And, and what, what, what rating are we using? Are we using the fact that we're probably going to go for a?
I think that, I think the district is ripe and ready for a rating upgrade for the currently A1 with Moody's to a minimum AA3, because at this juncture, we cannot use the state's enhancement program. The, the, the district does not get enough foundation payments to make those ratios. It's a free enhancement programmatic rating of AA2. So, the last couple of transactions, we had them insured to achieve a programmatic rating of AA2, but that was paid for. If we were to get that upgrade, we would not require that insurance, and that will save the district half a million dollars upfront.
Would that change our millage at all?
It would definitely.
It would help with our interest.
Absolutely, absolutely. It would certainly help with overall cost of the transaction, and yes, it would definitely. It's not going to change the millage on anything that's outstanding. The only thing that's going to change that village now is growth and growth in AV, but the overall interest rate and expenses associated with the new transaction will be reduced with an upgrade to the AA3.
But if we refinance anything that's existing today, would it impact that?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, if we, if we get a better bond rating, if we go to the double, double A?
Double A3.
Double A3. It'll affect the interest rates that we issue at, which will affect the millage.
Absolutely.
Right, that's, I guess that's just what I'm trying to like summarize in a nutshell.
Absolutely.
So, we'll get a better bang for our buck.
Absolutely. 100% correct.
It'll be lower than this, and, and it could impact our existing if we were refinancing.
If you're going to refinance, we have it ready. It's there, and it's close. And we were on the precipice within, I'd say, 10 days of doing it, and the market moved on us, and we haven't quite gotten back there. I do have numbers from your underwriter that do show a potential structure that would save money, but not, not in agreement the way, the way it's put together, because it would burden upfront taxpayers with a higher debt. because it would burden upfront taxpayers with a higher debt service, and I'm not gonna allow that. And I don't think the district would want to allow that. But in consensus, I would definitely think, obviously, it's, I know it sounds so self-serving, and for that I apologize, but it's been, I've been doing this for 25 years now, and I have always told clients, if you know you have to borrow and you know it's there, you have to examine the current market and you gotta strike when the iron's hot. And you've got two things working against you, inflationary construction figures, and again, we're on the verge of a interest rate climb. Right now, I think it's being artificially held down, and I think we are gonna see some mild increases because this Omicron variant seems to be regaining press and steam. And we were expecting a very volatile reaction in the market today by the Fed's announcement of the pullback on the buyback involvement in the interest rate markets. And the interest rate markets today rallied very odd, very, very odd. Much to the effect, though, we were able to include a $20 million taxable refund for Wadsworth Schools in addition to the $41 million new money.
And going back to, you know, this, this bond issue, you know, you talk about construction inflation and, you know, will prices come back down? History has typically said no, but even if it does, the other thing we have to consider is if interest rates go up, okay, we're gonna save on construction costs, but now we're gonna increase interest costs. And so will there be any savings in the end? I mean, that's anybody's guess, but it's something to consider, you know, when making a decision.
Sorry, Gary, did you repeat that again?
So, you know, if, if, if construction costs were to come down in the future for the inflation, but interest rates are expected to rise.
Actually, they may be offset each other.
They offset each other. You know, it couldn't happen, but not happen, and anybody's guess is as good as mine.
But I can tell you, an increase like you saw in your construction numbers from 19, or 2019 to now, at $148 million issue would take the slightest of movement increase in interest rate, you would double that in interest cost. You could easily go from 3.15% today to, let's just call it 4%. That'll add $15 million of interest on your issue. It's a significant cost, a significant cost. We are at unprecedented historical lows as far as interest rates are concerned. There will be an increase up and through May, but I think the district risks major rate exposure by waiting until November. Again, I know that sounds very self-serving, but that is very rare that we can kind of talk about something like that with the level of certainty we do. But when you're this low, there's not much room to go down.
Can you guys talk through the bottom table too, just to make sure we're all on the same page about the evaluation per the cost per $100,000 home value?
So the bottom table represents the same bond issue size, but what would represent is what the estimated annual cost will be for a $100,000 home value. Now, that's home value, so that would be an appraised value of around $35,000. Now, the appraised value or the taxable value of the district is generally 35% of its market value. So a home that's $100,000 on the market gets assessed at 35% of that for your millage calculation. So with that said, $100,000 home, a $150 million bond issue at 37 years and assumed interest rate of 3.75% would cost the homeowner an average of around $186 extra in real estate taxes a year. That's the benefit of having the expansive assessed valuation that this one has at $1.3 billion. Obviously, if that was a $200,000 home, that number would be doubled.
And I think we have a, what's our average home size in our district? Do you, did we have an idea?
Last time I looked, it was like 126,000.
We have such a diverse district. So we got real low, we got real high, and we got everything in between. So it's kind of hard to say. But I mean, the simple math on the millage is that we cut out all the calculations, $35 times the millage for your $100,000 home. So that's the simple math of, so basically, you could take the top table times $35. That's how you got to the bottom table.
That's it.
That's how it works out, you simplify the math.
That's exactly.
It's much more complicated to get there, but the easiest way to explain it is take your millage times 35, and that's your cost per $100,000. For, you know, unless it's a homeowner who has qualified for a home state credit. Their cost is a little less, but generally, that's, you know.
So when we come back to this worksheet, this cost worksheet, Cheryl, the only thing that's not on here is the storm shelter potential for September, right? You guys, like, that's.
We are, right now, we're looking at that.
I know that, but that's the only thing that's not on here, right? If we wait until after May, the storm shelter, like, potential has to go back on here because it's not on here now.
That is.
Right.
And that was on your, oh, no, you didn't have a number on the other sheet. So there's no evaluation on that right now, like, what it could be?
It's over a million. Probably about 1.5 million right now.
I think we had it on some of the original information. We had it on some of the stuff that, when we had talked about it earlier, but.
Yeah, I think like 1.2 million back then, you know, which was 2019. So I would be comfortable with estimating about one and a half million right now.
And there's a moratorium on that till September again.
Correct.
Can you give just a little bit of background on that? Just, our new board member that'll be sworn in in January, I don't know if you know, so it might be useful just to provide a little bit of background on it.
Sure. A few years ago, the, the building department in Ohio adopted a national code to provide all facilities with what they call a storm shelter area. It's really in essence providing an area within the building that all the building occupants can be held in and can sustain the winds of a F5 tornado, which I think, Scott, you may know the number, I think it's like 250 miles per hour. Now, that's an, you know, that, the likelihood of that happening, you know, in our area is minimal in Ohio in general. And it received a lot of pushback, not just from OFCC, the school districts, but all these different, you know, agencies that had to follow this policy. You also have to provide restaurants, there's all these other things that come along with it. And so the state, the commission put in a moratorium, a pause, a temporary pause in enforcing that code into their building projects until further notice while it's being reviewed further. Most school districts have chosen not to keep it in their budget. You know, you have the choice to put it in, even though there's a moratorium in effect right now. You could choose to put it in. Our experience and the data we've looked at says very few districts do that just because they don't feel the need or the risk is warranted of such an expense. That moratorium expires as of right now, September of 2022. And because if we were to put a project on the November ballot, that decision to include the money would have to be made prior to filing in the ballot the first week of August, and even, even a little bit further back in July when you need to have your readings, your board readings to put the project on the ballot.
This has been delayed multiple times. We talked about this in our 2016 project, we were talking about this.
I think that's when it came about was like late 15, if that's, yeah.
I think it was 2017, that was the last time they made code changes. So they actually probably are coming up again. But, you know, that was a previous project I was working on. They had that in there, and they put the moratorium on it, and it changed the way we were gonna do the project.
I think the general pulse of consensus, the anticipated decision is that it will be extended again, that, you know, that we feel is gonna happen, but there's obviously no guarantee. So the risk to the district is if you don't put it, you know, if you, if you don't put it on in May and wait until November, the cost could, just alone from the storm shelter requirement, go north.
Can I ask one more question about the December 2021 market rates here? Like, we are, we are including whatever estimates we think are gonna take place with construction, even in the OFCC cost set, right? Like, that, all that kind of stuff is included in here so that when we actually take this out to bid, which won't be till, you know, '23, right?
Yeah, those, those costs or inflations within the product are all built in.
It's all built in. And I, like, I go back to, like, what we, all that work that we put in up in the front to come up with the stuff that we, the costs that we came up with for the 2019 plan, and we were very thorough, I thought, when we sat together in this room. And so as long as we have just had to update those.
It's just kind of building on that. So if you were to build it in 2019, you're getting more like what we thought might be 2021 cost, which you might have been wrong, but it's just what you see at that time. The upgrades and the inflation of what you're seeing.
Well, I think that's the benefit of being so thorough upfront, which, which we learned from project one, right? So, yeah, that's just.
You try to get, you try to get to as close as you can to what the budget is. And then you adjust from there. You need to change the scope, you gotta change the scope. You're trying your best to predict three years out, which is quite the hard prediction.
And all the things down at the bottom, after the 130, this extra 17 million, that's our local. A lot of that is our locally funded shares. But there's some cost in the 127 that's locally funded. Is there, like, the extra space for extra students? There's some local funding shares in those numbers just because we're going with increase in size, correct?
I think.
That's correct.
Yeah, but I think those are in the subtotal base building. Cheryl, correct me if I'm wrong.
Right, that's what I mean, like, it's, it's, those, that's what it is up in the top.
Yes, there's more LFI's to this.
Than there is just on the bottom.
Yes.
Okay, but all the stuff on the bottom is LFI's.
And it all meets your bonding capacity.
Because most of the LFI, the top card is, we're building for 2,600 students where the OFCC, I think, wants us to build at like 2,040 or some type of number that we have never been at in our history. And how they project we get there, and we've talked about this in prior meetings, but it's just, they've never in 50 years have we had enrollment anywhere near that, and we have some larger developments going on in the community. How can we say that we're gonna lose 100 kids a year for the next five years? I think is unreasonable, but they don't seem to wanna agree with that.
They missed the mark at Warrensville as well. We were about to issue another $10 million for an additional facility that they did not include in the, for their.
Perfect example is our two elementary schools that we built in 2016. There is five and a quarter.
It's probably gonna affect your high school eventually, right?
Originally, it was just be five and a quarter, 125 kids. And we built that 650, and we're pretty, pretty packed.
Yep.
The good news, going back real quick to Belinda's comment about that first row and that $127 million, right? Yes, we do have an additional 400-something, 500-some students built in there. But when CPAP comes along, if you do have 2,600 students in enrollment, all of it becomes creditable, none of it's LFI. So if the numbers pan out like our data is showing they're likely to, this potentially all could be creditable, that 120, that 100, and, actually, everything to the subtotal base building, 130.4 million, would all be creditable.
So does, so does that mean our, our two elementaries would be creditable for the increase in, in students when they decide to come back and fund us 100 years from now?
Yeah, to be careful, because on paper, how Bill moved some 53 students in the master plan to, to the 612, just on paper.
Yes.
Okay, so it's gonna have to, you know, whether you get credited for those students on paper being at the 612 facility or in the elementary school is irrelevant. You will get, you will get credited for them somewhere.
Well, right, because if we have just more students total overall, like, it's not gonna matter where they are at that point.
Right, right. Where it's allocated to elementary school credit or middle high school credit, again, it doesn't make any difference, really any difference, but you'll get it regardless.
Yeah, 100 years from now.
I know.
That's, that's the tough thing about it because.
He did my goodness, Belinda.
Sorry.
The program started, I believe, in the late 90s, it was 97, 98, somewhere in there. And I think it was projected that we would receive, we would be at CPAP by, I think it was 2011. So, and we're not even close now.
Yeah. And I remember one of the meetings we sat in, I don't know, last year sometime, or maybe the year before, the guys, they were like, you know, like, do you think we'll call it by the next 10 years? And he's like, yeah, maybe in the next 10 years. And I said, you probably would've told us 10 years ago that same thing. He's like, yeah, so 10 years from now could be another 10 years away at that point too, so. You know, I figured, you know, we're only getting 10% credit from the state, so it's, it's not like they're, you know, it's gonna be what it's gonna be when we finally get there, if that makes sense.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are there companies bidding anything other than cost plus right now?
What do you mean by that?
They don't wanna pour a hard number down, any increases they're adding.
I, they don't show us like the specifics. We get a general sense based on previous bids we got on how much it's growing. So we don't know how much they're adding for potential inflation going forward. But it's, we see it, we know it's there, we know that, like, if things all settle down and things open up and products start moving again, it could stabilize. I don't think things go, come back down, but they can stabilize. And they're putting in that cost that, when they actually do this, that it's gonna keep increasing. So I don't know where it's gonna lie.
Yeah, it's my understanding that there's almost no one doing anything other than cost plus right now, which is risky.
For the first phase of the project, which is how we do the second phase, we do a construction manager risk model. So we have a construction manager at risk that gives us a guaranteed maximum price. And so it won't exceed that, you know, unless there's change orders for scope changes that will increase over that amount. But we get a, when our construction manager exists, the price, that's, that's the maximum.
So they're locked in.
They're locked in, but they take that risk of.
I'm guessing that's originally like cost plus.
Well, that's, it's a hard and fast number, so there's no plus.
Okay, right.
Okay, so, but right now, any large project, you're saying, you might be aware of that. Everyone's bidding cost plus right now.
No, we're getting, we're getting, we're getting at-risk cost still. But they're probably taking that into consideration.
I'm sure they're taking, yeah, bigger leverage.
Because they already have these contracts established. They already have these contracts established, so they can.
So this is, this is really, you know, obviously, we've been, we've been talking about this for a long time, obviously, since we started the facility plan back in 2000, Jim, what was it? 14?
Yeah.
You know, we've been doing this, and this has, this has been the plan all along, and I get it, it's a large number. But if we're, if we're going to move and do this when the market tells us it's the best timing to do it, and we, and we choose to go to the ballot in, in May, we have two resolutions that have to, Gary, if you could just step us through that process, what the timing is on that, what we have to do in January to ensure that we meet our deadlines.
So there's, if you were to go on the ballot in May, you have two resolutions that the board would need to pass. And that would be the first one, we call it the resolution of necessity. That resolution goes to county auditor's office, and they will certify the assessed valuation of what our millage amount would be. Then it will come back to us and we pass a second resolution called like the resolution proceeding, we'll be actually saying we're going forward on the ballot. That would ought to be done and filed with the board of elections by, I think the deadline is February 2nd. So if you were to go on the ballot in May, we'd have to be, you'd have to get both those done by February 2nd. So we require two meetings essentially in January to do that. There was one time in the past, we did both resolutions in the same meeting. I think it was Mr. Mike Rock was here, who was the PI levy, the substitute levy. It was one of those two where they actually had auditor's office here to come both in the same. No, that's not norm, usually you pass one of them.
I mean, that's, that's the next slide is.
Oh, well, there you go, see?
If you wanna switch. Just, we've done the OFCC filings, that's all set. Cheryl confirmed that's all good and all done. that's all good and all done, um, but in January, we're gonna do two resolutions to get this going, and then February second, I believe, yep, is when we need to file this with the district for putting it out of ballot. So it's quick, quick decisions, but, Darren, it might be your best opportunity.
It sounds like quick decisions, but we, like I said, we've done so much work on this, and it's been so many years that we've been having these conversations, I get, I understand.
It's not quick decisions with the design of the project, or the scope of the project, or what you want to get done, 'cause I think the scope is something we have to make sure we flush out correctly, in language, but I think that's been all, what, what the district wants is understood, I think it's just getting to the correct number and putting that out to the district.
And as far as the actual bond issue amount, we still, we can still consider some flexibility as far as the amount, so like, if there's, you know, five point three mils is too high, we do have unimprovement funds, you know, in the bank right now, we could do other types of borrowings to lower the ask from, you know, for additional funds from the taxpayer, so we could, there's a little bit of flexibility there, then, you know, trying to get to a certain number, you know, try to lessen, I doubt there's, there's some flexibility there.
Does anybody at the table have anything, any thoughts, like, here, board, future board members, like, do, you know, any, any thought process on, on where you feel like you would like to go in January?
Well, I, I think I've already made clear where, where I stand on the, on the issue, so, uh, but it, you know, it certainly makes sense, if, if it's gonna be moved forward, it needs to be moved forward, so.
Hi.
Hello.
Did you win?
We did, we won, no, Gerty.
Oh, cool, yeah.
Hey. Two seasons in our, those guys. Does anybody else have any, is there, do we have any more slides?
It's just, there's two slides, it's just two slides.
Yeah, it's just a really big decision, right? That we need to be ready to, ready to make in January, should we so choose, and, again, we've listened to a lot of data and a lot of information, I, I don't know that, you know, I don't know if it's helpful to have more work session time or not more work session time to determine what it is that this board decides that they want to do, um, you know, my feeling is, we've all been talking about this a lot, but we haven't really, we haven't really come to the consensus of whether or not we're putting this on the ballot, and I feel like administration needs to know whether or not we're gonna put this on the ballot, because they've got work that they need to do in order to get that ballot language prepared and, and get prepped to have that stuff ready for us at a board meeting, um, you know.
I'm sorry, Karen.
I just feel like they need, they need to have some direction from the board at this point.
So, well, I don't know, Lori, you haven't spoken, so, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, based on the fact that we don't know what the cost is gonna do, and, again, the interest rates are down, there's a possibility of taking advantage of that, I think we need to put it out there and let the district decide what they wanna do, 'cause that's who helped us put the plan together in the first place.
So I, I definitely think that going on in, in, in May is, is the right answer, because we need to figure out what we're doing with, with the campus, one way or the other.
Oh.
So, um, so I definitely, the sooner we, we come to that conclusion, then, then the clearer our, our way forward is, right? It's either, it's either, you know, either it's either this scenario, or there's another scenario where, where we work for the existing structure.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, too, like, we're holding everything for this, and it, we have to make progress some point, some way.
Right, we just, we need a decision point, and I, I think May is a fine decision point.
John, do you have any, I know you, I know you weren't here, but you've, you've been through this whole process.
Yeah, I mean, my, my opinion for quite some time has been that it's, I think it's time to put it on the ballot. I mean, we've talked, you know, when we passed phase one, we've put the silly plan out, we initially said that by passing, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three, we had a plan, I think we need, it's time that we continue to stick to it and move forward, and, you know, I think it's right to allow our community to decide what the, the future of the district is, so, and it, you know, I missed when we just said about interest rates and things like that, but we only know that, looking at this, the costs have only gone up, I can't imagine it's going to get any better as time goes on, so, I think at this point, we need to move forward and forge ahead, and if the community doesn't agree, then that's completely okay, too, and then we go figure out where to go from there.
Right, and I, and I would, I would concur with all that, I just feel like, you know, we, we've, like, again, like Lori said, we've told the community that we would allow them to make this decision, it's, we have the justification of why we're putting it on in May, we, like, it's financially the best option for the community, and if we can, if we can, you know, continue to educate the public on why it's a good decision for May instead of waiting, um, I, I feel like they have the right to make that decision, and we should allow them to do that, and then, at that point, after May, we can figure out what we're gonna do going forward, I think it's just, yeah, I don't, I don't like leaving the public out there hanging and, and telling them, hey, just, just keep waiting, like, till five people can make a decision on what it is that we wanna do, and, and I feel like they have the right to make that decision, not us, so.
My experience has been, from a voter perspective, when you've got fresh construction, fresh off the heels of completion, when they're looking at new bricks and mortar and they saw what they got for their first approval, it makes the decision for those on the fence a little easier, 'cause you, from everything I've read and in discussions with Gary, it sounds like, aside from the time Gary Spence had it, is, uh, it went pretty smoothly, and the community seemed pretty happy with what you put together, and it was a pretty.
It's like, it's like the duck, you know, you just kinda goes around, and underneath the water, you just go in.
There was a lot of word very good, it was just myself.
Certainly, certainly.
Thanks, Gary.
He doesn't talk on an island.
I understand. He's my only, my only main point of communication.
Oh, here we go, well, we've tried to parry by this time, by all means, we should vote here now, as an island.
I don't, I don't remember. Coffee with beer right now.
I know, right?
I have some nerves.
It was, it was a big deal, it was an all encompassing project, right, and then, and then, weather, I mean, it, there's everything, right? Weather issues, we had, we, almost immediately, we're below, you know, 'cause I, anyway, I will, but, but it was, it was, it was all encompassing, there's just no two ways about it, all encompassing.
And, and I guess for going forward and getting prepared for January, are we just, are we gonna go with the, the dollar amount on the sheet here, the hundred and forty-seven, and go for the full amount in that aspect? Do we wanna try to get it to a certain number and try to use unimprovement fund or keep those funds aside for contingency? There's a lot of options, we could do specific participation bonds, PI, whatever, ask what we, what we do.
What is our millage? I know, I'm, I'm sure you said four, and I apologize.
Five point one three.
About five point one three, maybe a supplement of a PI portion to get it under five.
I would love to see it under five.
Yeah, and it's not that big, so, take off maybe at most a quarter mil from what the real ask is, and meet that up with the stopgap measure on the PIPs, Gary.
How would that, it would really reduce it from five three to under five?
Well, we're looking at.
I mean, I know that I'm looking at a table that says a hundred and fifty.
So, if we went three and a quarter, three and three quarters assumption at a hundred and fifty, I mean, between five thirteen, you were probably closer to the five fifteen number at a hundred and forty-eight, uh, so, if we were to try to get that, maybe go with that hundred and forty million, and what's?
Yeah.
What's the other, so, and then keep your stopgap measure between seven and ten million dollars, easily affordable through the PI.
What are your tax funding or some other types of funding?
We have a, a balance situation right now, and, and, already in the bank, so.
And that gets you under that five, it, it, from a, a psychological standpoint, it's a big, it's a big.
It is, there's.
No questions about that, I agree with that one hundred percent.
Yeah, we can only about four point nine nine.
Right, right.
It's ridiculous, but it's true.
No, it's very, very true, very.
Look at the evaluation.
Gas prices have been that way, it's all, always.
Unless you ever pay two ninety-nine and yell the three oh one.
Exactly, 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 I totally agree, and that, that's a very tolerable number from a, the cost perspective, now, that's a little more expensive type financing, but it doesn't require a vote, and if it gets you to the ultimate objective, it's, it, it's a small price to pay.
Yeah. What's the risk associated, what's the risk associated with that, though, not knowing what's gonna happen with construction costs? Where does that put us, like, would we be possibly?
You don't have those extra funds in case it keeps going up.
So I, I think that's something we have to consider, I mean, there's a risk to doing that with the unknown that we have with construction costs, so, and when you look at, I, I understand from the psychological standpoint, 'cause I agree, I'd rather pay a hundred few dollars for a gallon of gas, but, um, when you look at the per hundred thousand evaluation, it's not a significant, you know, if it was taking it down a hundred dollars, I'd be like, oh yeah, like, sign us up, so, I don't know, I, I guess I think we should consider the risk, not, of the unknowns with the construction costs, um, versus trying to do that, so we don't put ourselves in a place where we can't finish a building, you know what I mean?
Not to mention the fact that we still have a couple of old buildings online that we need to consider what happens with those, plus, this price doesn't include, it doesn't include a couple of things, right, maintenance and bus and transportation, so it doesn't include those things, so that money that we had earmarked from the ester funds, kind of earmarked, right, that we moved over, were kind of, like, set aside with that purpose and intended intention, and so if we start utilizing those things, now we're, right, we're shortchanging ourselves a little bit, and I, I get it, I understand that, like, I'm gonna see it under five, I get it, I do get it, but.
I think it's how we talk to the public about it, right? Like, again, if we really sit down and figure out what that couple cents per gallon of gas is, it, I don't know, I, I think we, I think they'd rather see a finished building than, at the end of the day, they approve it than us coming in being like.
Like saying, what do we do with our buses?
Yeah, or we can't finish a part of the project because we run out of funds.
'Cause the millage will likely not be what it is after the first year.
You just beat me to the punch, 'cause I think a big part of the message is what happened with the original phase and how that came down from the ballot millage immediately, immediately, and we're gonna structure this issue with a very aggressive prepayment option, and the likelihood of it being refinanced within the next five years is very high.
I, I just think we have to consider that.
I, I didn't find it either, I mean, it's not one of those things that I'm dead set on, it's just, I just wanna make sure that we.
I must say something that maybe I shouldn't, like, most, most people, I don't think they even know what millage is.
They don't.
This.
I think, like, I, I kind of know, because I've been forced to know, but you go to a, a normal person, and if it's the difference between paying fifty bucks more for a year, they're not gonna pay attention to that, they have no idea what that means, and I'm, I'm in that boat.
I know, I tend to agree with that, and I think.
I think that's the reality of the situation, and I might not have, should've said that, but that's the reality.
And it's how you tell the story of what's happened from our first phase, too, and how it's already reduced, and we're not paying what we initially paid.
That's, I don't know.
That's an extra.
Just put my two cents out there.
Well, yeah, you could tell someone it's one mils or ten mils, their only question is how much is it gonna cost?
That's right.
This year.
That's right.
Thirty cents a day.
I don't wanna throw that out in the work section, everyone's gonna think that that's what it is.
I like that thinking.
It is seven oh seven.
I know, so let's.
For the board meeting, it was supposed to start at seven.
All right, are we done? We're done? We, uh, do we need to call the roll to end this work session?
Uh, it's, it just kinda.
Or we just continue with the other one? Thank you for coming, Cheryl.
Very good.
Good.
All right, may we go ahead and call the meeting to order? Go ahead and call the roll, please.
John Martin.
Here.
Land Gracie.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Lori Gieske.
Here.
And Jack Miley Haskins.
Let's go ahead and rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
On the behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone, this is a meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comments during the meeting, the public participation section on the agenda. First, we'll make a motion to approve the October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one special meeting minutes, if I can have a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck, is there any discussion? If not, go ahead and call the roll.
Land Gracie.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Hi.
Hi.
John Martin.
Hi, motion carried, nice job. All right, Dr. K, let's take this as special reports.
We got none today.
None?
None.
All right, okay, how about all business, anybody?
Um, can I just, uh, mention that we had asked previously, I don't know, sometime over the summer, if we could change some of the order of the board agenda to put the committee reports in front of their respective voting sections, if maybe we can do that, and I know it's new, maybe it's new business, but I don't know if we should have a consent at, uh, an approval of the agenda, on the agenda, do you know what I mean? Like, have, have a resolution to approve the agenda, 'cause sometimes we do take, take things out and move things and whatever, and that would give people an opportunity, so, it's kind of old business, new business, so.
Okay. Were you looking to move those sections today, or are you talking about for the future?
No, 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 I'm just talking for the future, we can't like actually get that accomplished.
I think you're really good, 'cause I like when you have got the finance committee with the treasurer's report and all those kind of good things, I think those, that would work.
What would you do with the liaison reports, just curious?
Probably leave them at the beginning.
At the beginning, yeah.
So we can have some conversation up there.
Anybody else have anything else they'd like to discuss?
I don't know.
Okay, how about, um, new business? All right, that takes us on the Board of Education Committee and Liaison's reports. The first thing is superintendent's business advisory, we did have, I can't find the date, I was looking for it, but we did have a business advisory meeting, um, not that long ago, and we had the opportunity to see a new spirit store that our students are working on through, um, Mr. Ross's, his business and marketing class, they, a lot, they taught us all how, they showed us all how they are making the different sweatshirts and t-shirts and all that, and they're, they're doing a really, really amazing job, we had the opportunity to pick out our own designs for the shirts, and they made them right in front of us, and they did a really fantastic job, and really excited to see what these kids are gonna do with that this year, really neat. Um, and that was it, I don't know what our next one is, I imagine, probably sometime in January. That takes us to curriculum programming and boosters, who's, who's the, who else on here?
So I am, on the curriculum, uh, so, we did have a curriculum meeting, uh, actually this week on the fourteenth, and, and I was in attendance, and, and it was a, a double decker with the, uh, second one being the buildings and grounds, uh, afterwards, but, uh, so, so we, we met and had, had a good conversation, um, there's, there are some changes in, in legislation with regard to having personal finances a half-credit, and, and so, apparently, within our, our economics curriculum, there is personal financing incorporated, and so we don't know at this point, if the standards are released, whether or not we're gonna be in a situation where that covers that requirement or, or not, but that is something that, that's, that's coming up, um, we had the, um, so, so you may recall, earlier in the year, we talked about, uh, a, a math course that was, was changed, and what, the focus, as best as I can explain it, is trying to make the applications of math that you're learning tied to real life.
Is that a mathematical modeling class? So one of my kids is in that class, it's actually been, it's interesting, it's definitely been a traditional.
Yeah, so, so I, I'd be curious to talk to you afterwards, how your, how your son enjoys it, but it's quantitative math reasoning, is, I think what they're calling it now, right? So, so, but that's, so that has had some, some positive, uh, uh, perspective, in, in the end, my, my goal, and, you know, on the curriculum committee, is trying to make sure that, you know, the things that we, we teach, that we don't go backwards, that we're going forward, so if this is an enhancement that allows students who may not have been engaged in math, this is a pathway for them, that's great, but at the same time, we don't want to, to, to jeopardize the traditional mathematical program that we have in, in place, because ultimately, we, we need engineers who can fully engineer.
Yes.
So, and, and design and do, uh, bridges and such, so anyway, so that's, so that's initial feedback was, was, is positive on that, and then we are, um, there's a, uh, some, some other classes that, that we are, we've applied to be part of a pilot on. So, and, and design and do, uh, bridges and such. So anyway, so that's, so that's initial feedback was, was, is positive on that. And then we are, um, there's a, uh, some, some other classes that, that we are, we've applied to be part of a pilot on, uh, it's, uh, with math and computer science. And actually, I'm just gonna, you may have updates from, from the fourteenth. So is there any update on, on us and our status of the pilots?
No, that won't be released probably until the beginning of January. I think they're gonna notify schools whether or not. So we've applied to be, uh, offer two additional Algebra II equivalent courses, which is what the quantitative reasoning class is. Just so you know, the mathematical modeling and reasoning, which is extremely cumbersome to say, is going to be renamed to quantitative reasoning next year. So we've applied, uh, one is discrete math and computer science. And the other course is a data science course. Both, um, Algebra II equivalents, which would again give students options depending on what their career interests are. Doesn't mean you take them, well, you can take them in place of Algebra II. You can take them before Algebra II. You can take them after Algebra II. It's again, just offering options to students so that they can start to engage in math in ways that are meaningful to them. It's, it's really exciting. It's very cool.
And that's the key, is making it real world and relatable. So it's not an abstract theory. Anyway, so hopefully we'll, we'll find out more, uh, early next year and with what, who will be part of that pilot and we'll be able to move forward. You may also recall earlier, from earlier, um, reports from the curriculum committee that, that we had a, a curriculum audit that was done by, uh, Dr. Silverberg out of Ashland, uh, Ashland College. And it, just to bring people up to speed, he actually worked with the different departments and grade levels. And it was done directly with the teachers and it wasn't through the administration. So the goal was to get an honest assessment from the teachers without feeling that somebody was looking over their shoulder. So, um, we, we talked a little bit about that and it was, the, the, the goal of this assessment is to look at the results of the test. The testing of that, both the state level testing and, and map testing as well, to, to identify where gaps are. So we self-assessment, here are the gaps. Is that self-assessment really accurate or do we need more work? And, and it was more or less recently made available to us. But I'm gonna turn it forward to you again because I'm sure there are other questions and you have more detailed knowledge than I.
So the curriculum audit, um, was to identify gaps, like Mr. Heck said, in, um, in what we're teaching. So it started with teachers self-reporting on the standards and saying, yes, we teach this completely, no, only partially, or maybe not at all. So we're looking at where those gaps are and we're gonna start horizontally. So we'll start at a grade level or a department or a subject and look at where are gaps within and among teachers who are teaching the same thing. And then we'll be able to look vertically, which is gonna help us understand where, maybe in second grade, we are teaching some of that foundational stuff that they need in fourth grade. So it's going to help us align our programming even, even more so than we have started to do, um, just by getting set programs. Then we also had, and I don't know, Mr. Heck, if you're in touch with that. We were able as administrators to add about six or seven questions at the end of, that, at the end of, of his time with each department or grade level relating to culture, communication, leadership. So we got some feedback on those things that as a leadership team, we can take that and, and build some goals off of that to help us move forward.
Was that, was that funded by a grant or something in particular?
No. That was, that was us, our decision.
District funded.
How much, so was most of the interaction remote because of the, the coronavirus situation? He was, so how, how, can you just give a sense of how, how intensive his involvement was?
He was with each group of teachers for, I, I wanna say an hour and a half. I mean, he was here, I wanna say maybe five to six full days, and he moved throughout the district. He went building to building. So he was, the data that he collected was each building's teams together. So it was, it was a concern. And then he compiled all those results. And the, the questions at the end were handwritten and he compiled those into those summaries that I gave you. So it was, it was quite a bit of, of data, but it was, it, it was, it was really good and the teachers really liked it. They enjoyed it. They, they, it made them very thoughtful about what we're doing and reflected on how they're teaching. It was interesting across the elementaries. And we got the reports back. We can disaggregate at the, at the building level, you know, which obviously at the elementary level is, is interesting to look at. Um, and then, and then by grade level and department.
So I'm sorry this is so long, but this is really important stuff. And it's what we're here for. So like, it's, it's worth the time to go over in some more detail. The, the last thing that I'll, I'll bring up is that, that we are part of a, a, we made an application, a grant application. It's tied to pathways or career pathways. And it kind of dovetails with the things that we have done with the, the welding lab and the consortium that we were part of with Wickliffe and Perry and Pinkwell City and, um, I guess that's it.
Yeah, part, part of, part of my presentation today was to give, uh, some information regarding the credentialing, uh, programs and alternate pathways and other options for our kids. Unfortunately, uh, I keep, someone felt sick, so we're gonna push that presentation back to public next month.
Okay, then I won't go any further since we're gonna get far more detail from Dr. Kales. And that is all I have. And we did not, so I am, I don't know, I suspect that the liaison for, I don't have a report from Jackson.
Okay. Can we, will we have a work session at some point on, on the results of what that audit were, like, further discussion? Just so that we know as a board, what, like, became of that curriculum audit? It would be interesting. I find that interesting.
Well, will we see some of those results possibly in the strategic plan as you look at, depending on what comes out of that and what?
Yes, that would be a component of the, I, if you would like one, certainly.
I mean, you know.
I mean, there was, there was a summary page that I shared with and I don't know if, if Kathy added.
Just maybe once it's wrapped up, it would just be interesting to get some.
Well, I mean, it is wrapped up. He's done. Yeah, he's done. And so we are taking that information now and building some, making some decisions and building some, some professional development based on that.
Yeah, I, I, I think that it would, because this is critical to our way forward, that having a work session on, on that would be, doesn't have to be long. But just, uh, everybody needs to be aware of it. Everybody on the board needs to be more aware of, of where we're at. It helps us to be better stewards of, of, of the board.
You know, like what becomes, what becomes of it, what, what the plans are, what kind of changes we make as a result of it. It's just, you know, like, right, that's, that's why we're here. It's just interesting and just having more information on how that process is, is going would be really great. Great.
Well, I certainly think at our January organizational meeting, once we get all of our meetings for the year on the books, it'd be a great time to try to slot in some of those work sessions for next year.
Sure.
Anything else for curriculum programming?
That is it.
Well, then you're right up again with buildings and grounds operation.
Golly, isn't this a Tom Heck hour here? Okay.
There we go.
So just, this will be, uh, quicker, um, on the buildings and grounds. Uh, on the agenda, you're going to see a request to buy some doors from, from Capital. And, and so there are a number of doors in, at the campus at, at, uh, Lammouth and, I can't remember if there's anybody else.
Buckeye.
Buckeye, thank you. So, so, and, and I don't know if anybody has any questions on it. It's in, in the agenda. It's, it's not nothing, but it's, uh, doors, commercial doors are quite expensive is the, is the bottom line. We've used them before and we've been happy with the performance of them. So, so that's why we are recommending that out of the, out of the committee. We, we are in a situation with, with, uh, with Lammouth for, for heating that we are, we definitely need to move forward with the replacement of the boilers that are there. One, one boiler was, is, is now permanently offline, so we are operating on one. Fingers crossed, we're in good shape, but, but, uh, we want to move forward and have a contract wet in early March so that we can get that work done in time for, for the next, the next heating season.
Have we been running on one boiler for a while? This isn't the first season.
We, we have.
Has it been down?
We have been.
So that's a green, that's important too, right? It's not the first year that we've been running on one boiler.
It is true, but it, it needs to be, to be addressed. And I don't know, if you'd like to add anything to, to the, the Lammouth situation?
Uh, we currently met with a engineer this morning. Uh, he was at the boiler room. He looked over, took pictures, took notes. And then we will get a, uh, report back within, probably after the holidays with a ballpark idea of what we're looking at for costs before we move forward, um, anymore than, before we start the engineering process and thankfully engineering and the, the schematic.
Part of those options is to see whether or not we can add air conditioning.
That is correct. The, the current piping in the school as it sits, a ramp, this is for the original portions of the building. There is a chiller line that is currently involved with piping. That chiller line does go to the units of the classrooms. The goal here is to look over the blueprints and determine if we can't put that back online. If so, we will add a chiller, um, if the cost is feasible. And we will have the ability to, right now, it looks like seventy-five percent of the whole section can be, um, air conditioned, which would be huge.
Yeah, we actually, uh, reached out to Silverberg. They, they already partnered up, uh, facilities projects. So we reached out to them to see if they can help us do that. And they partnered with a mechanical engineer that came out today. We actually disconnected yesterday. He's gonna do something for today. So they're working on getting a proposal to us of, you know, for the architectural engineering services. Hopefully we'll see that sometime in January. And then we'll spec it out, put it out for bid, uh, hopefully in the February timeframe to have something awarded by March first. You know, they came out, looked at it and definitely agreed that, I mean, it needs to be replaced and, uh, hopefully we can get that together. And hopefully, you know, the, the ultimate goal is to have a new boiler installed by the time we start school next school year.
Thanks.
And then we, we did spend some time, you, in, from previous discussions, we talked about the possibility of taking the, the house next door, which we acquired recently and making that the, the, uh, the office space for the maintenance department. We, we did go over some of the, the costs, I, um, of that. I think we're still in the process of figuring out the, you know, what things need to be added, which ones would be recoverable regardless of what we did to move forward. So we minimized the, the sunk costs into the building. Uh, we had some conversations and, and, so I suspect maybe in January, we'll, we'll have a, a list of the, the things we want to do and then be able to identify those that would be sunk versus those that would be, that would translate into whatever future direction we would be going into. So, but I, I still, you know, depending on, on where the sunk costs come in at, we either, my, my opinion long term is we, we either need to occupy the building or we need to tear it down. We, we should not leave it vacant. So.
There needs to be some of the work done too on examining whether or not we need all or a portion of the property in Concord as well. Maintenance, uh, building. Not, not to fix it up, I'm saying to rid the district of it.
Right. Okay.
And that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Policy, strategic plan?
Mrs. Meniski. So we met, the policy, we met on December second to review the, um, policy that's listed on today's board agenda for the second reading and approval. We recommend that approving all the policy that's listed there, the majority of it is due to federal law or Ohio revised code changes. We do recommend, though, if you haven't, um, to take a deeper look at policy fifty-six thirty point oh one, the positive behavior intervention and supports. Um, a lot of change there, a lot of information that probably should just be aware of and make sure that the board understands. But again, most of it is due to, um, update on definition, um, clarification, due to things that we've learned. And then again, um, just changes in revised code and federal law. And then from strategic plan, um, after the last board meeting and the update, there was some additional questions. So I did reach back out to Patty, um, Coslow and Lisa Regal and, um, Dr. Kales sat in on a meeting with us just to get some clarification. This has a lot of details, so I'm just gonna go ahead and highlight kind of some of the things that's in it just for us right now.
This is gonna be also in my presentation. I do have one slide, just really briefly, that gives a time.
The timeline?
Timeline next to the ones.
Okay, perfect. So I'll just kind of go into the process piece of this and the outcome or the product that will be delivered. So again, they're going through the process. They have a three-piece process that they're, um, walking us through, which is the input, the construction and the adoption of our strategic plan. We're currently in the input part of the process. And what's been completed to date is, one is we reviewed the prior strategic plan to say what was accomplished and kind of celebrate what was done. Um, and that was admit, that was, um, with administrator and board input. I think, I, I can't remember when we did that, but I remember them being here and us having that discussion. The next thing was discovering, um, priorities and perspectives. So again, they've, um, got input from the central office team and board input, um, through the surveys and individual interviews that they did with us. Um, they also have teacher and staff input and teacher and staff survey. In January, and this will be on the timeline, there's gonna be student, parent and community focus groups plus a student survey coming out. So that'll be the last part of the input. And then the next part would be the construction of the strategic plan. And they'll engage with, um, leadership teams to go ahead and refine and then be able to present a plan to the board in March on what we hope to accomplish over the next five years. And that'll include some tactics and some immediate things that we can begin working on. There is some detail in here under priorities. These are by no means kind of set in stone because there's a part of the input process that's not completed. And they don't feel comfortable kind of saying, this is what we're gonna be focused on until we get that last piece of input. Um, and they feel it's very important, again, because as a board, we sat here and we did tell them that we wanted the community and stakeholders engagement to make sure we're working on the right things, kind of what the public wants. So that'll be the last part. Um, and then they look for us to kind of help, um, adopt the, the strategic plan and then help with the administration to make sure that we are checking in and accomplishing things along the way. So that's a very high level of all the detail that, um, Lisa Regal had put together for us, just for more detail. I don't know if there's any immediate questions on kind of that approach or thoughts about how we're proceeding with this. I'll let Dr. Kales give the timelines. It's in his report.
No, I think it's just nice to see this all written out like this.
That is all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us then to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kales.
Okay, thank you. All right, just, just, uh, we're getting a matter of five numbers here. As of Tuesday of this week, we've had five hundred and thirty-two COVID cases, uh, reported to us. And if you look at, uh, the next slide, you're gonna see, week by week, since the start of the year, how many COVID cases we had, uh, in each of those weeks. You'd see that the highest happened to have been the week, uh, just after Thanksgiving break, with seventy-eight identified, uh, COVID cases. Um, but as you can see, it drops down to twenty-fourth the next week in seventeen and week seventeen. Now, week seventeen is only representative of Monday and Tuesday. So that's why the number's a little bit lower than, uh, some of the others. Thanksgiving again was, uh, November twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. And, uh, on, uh, Monday, the twenty-ninth is when we spiked at seventy-eight. It's not out of the ordinary because as you know, any other time we come off of a weekend or, or a holiday, it always seems that that Monday, people, although they may have, um, been identified as having COVID, they don't report it until that Monday. Now, this, these are the numbers, again, comparing other districts, uh, in Lake County. Um, I didn't put the rank out there, but we're the third highest. Um, there are actually a couple of other school districts that are actively masking their students. They are higher and some are lower. But that's where we stand right now. This is proportionately to the number of students in terms of enrollment and how many students have, have been identified as having COVID. At this point, we're a little over ten percent of our total, uh, student enrollment that have been identified as having, um, COVID. One of the things I want to mention, I, I was talking to a couple of other superintendents in the area. And I haven't gotten, I haven't received too many calls on, uh, masking except for today. I actually received one asking whether or not the board would revisit, uh, masking students because there is a spike. I have to let the board know that, um, in the discussions I've had with other superintendents, there are school districts right now that are, that have or are considering dropping the mask mandate and being mask optional, uh, in January. So in as much as we've just masked in the fall, some of these districts that have masks are not. So, inasmuch as we've just masked in the fall, some of these districts that have masks are now going to be mask optional come, uh, second semester. These are the quarantines since the beginning of the school year, six hundred and eighty-five, those are not active quarantines, those are total. And again, the, this, uh, this data is representative of December fourteenth. These are quarantines by the week. We had a little bit of a spike right after Thanksgiving break, which isn't surprising. And again, week seventeen is representative of only Monday and Tuesday of this week. This is an interesting slide, this is district-wide absences since last board meeting. Uh, December thirteenth, um, we had five hundred and four absences, and seventy-six were related to COVID. It's not really out of the ordinary, in fact, it might be a little bit lower than some of the other ones that are, um, uh, presented in this slide. And these are all, these, these are all representative of, uh, days since our last board meeting. This is our strategic plan update. Does the board have any question about COVID? Like I said, I hate to keep on bringing it up at every board meeting, I want the board to know what's been going on, just because we got.
Just, if I could, go back to the other districts that are, that are potentially, uh, going mask optional. Is it the majority of the, the ones that are currently, do, how, what's, what percentage of the districts are considering that?
I don't know the exact percentage. Um, I know Madison went mask optional for their, uh, middle and high school students as of November thirtieth, so they're already off. And they're gonna go elementary and preschool, uh, January fifth. Uh, Fairport has been mask optional all along. Um, I believe Kirkland is, there's a strong possibility that they may be mask optional as of January eighteenth. Um, Wycliffe and Painsville City have no plans to unmask, and that's what I know so far. I know Willabees, like, is kicking it around, and so is Manner. Manner, um, it sounded like they were going in that direction with some spike last week or so, they're not committing anything as of yet. Which is understandable, they're gonna try to commit, you know, three, three, four weeks out, so.
Thank you.
I think if this follows any type of pattern as it did last year, the spike in, in cases were in October, November. So, um, hopefully, for everybody's sake, that these numbers do go down, uh, come the first of the year.
But there's been some change in quarantine rules, maybe the past couple of days as well, so.
In a nutshell, this is an update, uh, for the strategic plan. In January, we're gonna be very busy, student surveys are gonna be completed by grade six through twelve on the seventh. January tenth, we have parent community surveys that will go out. Those surveys will go out via several media platforms, and for the students, the parents are gonna know, if, if a student is gonna fill out a, a, a survey, parents are gonna be notified that they're gonna be part of that process. January thirteenth, student focus groups for grade six and seven at Luth, and on the fourteenth, the high school, eight and twelve. Uh, these focus groups aren't gonna be the entire enrollment, it's gonna be smaller groups, manageable groups, so we can get some info, information from the kids, but it's gonna be a broad, uh, span of our, our type of student here at, at the school. We're not gonna just focus on kids that are, say, involved with athletics or, you know, just clubs, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get a mix. Um, and at the end of January, uh, there's gonna be board outreach via email and digital Zoom if requested, so, um, I know there was some discussion about having some type of meeting before the February third meeting, where we were gonna come, uh, with, uh, Patty and Lisa to talk to the board about, uh, the, um, progress of the, of the strategic plan. But they're also leaving it out in, in January, where if the board is interested in hearing a little bit more before that February third, that they'll make themselves available to the board. February third, uh, first, we have parent community focus groups, uh, at three, five, and seven PM. We picked those hours because we weren't sure that, you know, some parents might be working and community members in the morning, some in the afternoon, some, uh, you know, in the evening. So we wanted to make it at least somewhat, um, available for, uh, though, taking that into consideration. February third, there'll be a presentation update to the Board of Education. And on February, uh, twenty-third, uh, Central Office and Building Leadership will have a meeting because we wanna prepare for a presentation by, uh, administration at the March board meeting. Uh, almost unpacking or unveiling, uh, the, the strategic plan to the board. This is it in a nutshell, I, I tell you, we spent a lot of time, um, trying to put it in, uh, some type of order because we have so many things going on right now, and trying to coordinate calendars is, uh, is quite the task. I think in the last board meeting, we also talked about staff shortages, just like other districts around the country, everyone is experiencing shortages, and it's very difficult, and how we operate, in fact, and how we operate. And, uh, I wanna thank, uh, the parents because there are times where we're triple, doubling and tripling routes over in the transportation garage, which is a testament to our director and also our employees over there, um, where, um, I don't know how they do it. Uh, sometimes, you know, routes are, are delayed, um, but they're doing the best job that they possibly can. And, um, again, I just, I don't know how, how they're doing it for such a long period of time. We had, um, quite a few people out because of COVID in that department, and they're slowly now okay to come back. So we're not as bad as we were, um, maybe a week or two weeks ago. Now, what we did is, we've been more aggressive in posting our employment opportunities, and we did it just recently. Um, and the numbers that are next to the type of job are the people that have responded to us that are interested in that particular area. So, as we sent it out, we had fourteen people say that they would consider being a substitute teacher. Uh, three bus drivers, we've had, uh, lunchroom assistants, nine people said that they'd be interested. And what I decided to do, um, is show the board exactly where we're posting all of our positions, um, on these different platforms, but also, I wanna make sure that we get this on, uh, on tape or TV today, or on our web. That our staff shortages, um, are, are, I don't wanna say they're concerning, but they are getting more difficult to, to operate. And I wanted to leave the phone number, that if anyone out there is interested in subbing, or even, uh, maybe a possibly a permanent position, that they can call the district office at four four zero three five eight eight three zero zero. And, uh, they can also ask for our human, uh, resource director, Mallory Aliff, and her number is three five eight eight two two three. You can call anytime there today, or even after hours, if you can, and leave a message. If you are interested, we will follow up and give you as much information as we can because we wanna form these symbiotic relationships where you help us and we can help you. And, uh, if you're interested, we'll be happy to talk to you about possible employment. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I know, but are you gonna move the slides, or should I sit over here? All right, that takes us next to the finance audit personnel committee and legislative ladies, uh, Mrs. Chriskey.
Sure, so I'm gonna focus on the legislative section first, and there's, there's been a lot of legislation being passed currently, but I just really wanted to focus on one, House Bill two eighteen, that's been passed by the House, but not yet the Senate. Um, and it deals with COVID vaccine restrictions and exemptions. Um, I know that's on everybody's mind, and so, um, it's been passed by the House currently. It would, I just, just some brief highlights, you know, there's three pages of data on this, but I'll just give you a couple of highlights. It would prohibit public and private schools and public and private colleges and universities from requiring a student or employee to receive a COVID nineteen vaccine, which has not yet been approved, um, by the FDA for full approval. It would, um, it leaves the decision-making process up to school districts completely. Um, and so it opens the door for non-uniform and disparate COVID nineteen vaccine policies across the state of Ohio, which is par for the course in the state of Ohio. Um, so that, to me, is problematic. It provides for exemptions, um, which, you know, are outlined in the legislation, and, and they're pretty standard. Um, all costs and fees associated with testing would be, um, district, district paid if we required testing. So if we said, if you don't wanna be vaccinated, if that was our policy, for example, and, and you have to be tested twice a week, we would have to bear the cost of that if we were gonna require that. It prohibits schools from denying students the opportunity to part, to participate in school affiliated activities solely based on their, um, COVID nineteen vaccine status. It permanently prohibits public and private employers, including school districts, from requiring individuals to show proof of vaccination for any reason. Um, it also prohibits employers from requiring employees to receive a COVID vaccine that has not been fully approved. Um, it's currently pending in the Senate. Um, I just think it's important legislation that we need to be following and tracking, other than the, you know, the, the standard educational legislation that's, that's going on. Again, education is the second largest, um, pieces of legislation that go through the House and the Senate. And so, this was just important, I thought it was worthy of, um, some consideration here, so I just wanted to give you an update on that. That's what I have for legislative. Um, we did have a finance committee meeting on the ninth of December. Um, did we, we taped the work session, correct? Um, did you want me to summarize that here? We, we basically in our work session previous to this meeting mostly reviewed the same information that we discussed at our finance meeting, which I can review again for the public, but we're gonna post that on our website, correct?
This will all be together, work session plus regular meeting.
Okay, so we, we discussed the, um, phase two of the facility plan at our finance committee meeting. I'm not gonna go into all those details, but, um, you know, we, we, just, it provided an update, we had, um, our architectural firm and our municipal bond folks in attendance at that meeting, and we reviewed all, all the information. And again, if you watched the work session that we just had, it's, it's basically the same information plus more. So I'm not gonna review that again. Um, we also talked about all the board agenda items that are on the finance committee, um, agenda here. And we also talked about, in the personnel section, we are, um, we have on the agenda here in personnel that we have now hired an EMIS coordinator for a district who is an internal transfer, so that's exciting. Um, we talked about the staffing shortages that we're having, and the need to, uh, approve the substitute revisions that, in order to take advantage of new legislation on who can sub in the district. So that's also on the agenda, um, and we had asked and, did, asked some questions about, uh, staff surveys. And we had talked about the surveys that go out at the end of the year, but, um, perhaps we could do some additional things. But it sounds like through the curriculum audit and the things that we're doing with the strategic plan, that those kinds of things are, are already taking place. So more updates on those things as we go through would be helpful. Um, and that's all I have for that meeting. That's all I have.
Great. All right, and that takes us to Mr. Plankoff for the treasurer's report.
Okay, just have a few updates tonight. Uh, the first update is our state funding calculations that we were supposed to get this month were delayed. Uh, they will be next month, uh, so they, they finalized the two December payments based on our prior buying-in budget, and then in January, we will finally see our new state funding calculations that were effective six months ago. So, we look at it, it's like we're halfway through the fiscal year, and we've yet to know what our funding looks like. We're twenty-five percent through a state buying-in budget and yet to see the calculation. But that will all come out in January, we can finally see how the, uh, fair funding, the, the fair school funding plan, the funding formula will affect us. And, uh, you know, as you know, there was a guarantee built in, so there's not gonna be a decrease in revenues, it's just gonna be how, or a decrease in net of revenue expenses because of the way things have changed in reporting, so, but you'll see how that affects us going forward, and we'll compare it to what we projected in our five-year forecast to see if there's any adjustments that we need to that. Um, next item on the list is, uh, if you recall, we, we had investments through Red Tree Investments, we, you know, contracted with them, uh, about a year ago or so, I, I think it was. Uh, I've increased our amount in that account by five million dollars, now we have fifteen million, uh, invested with Red Tree, uh, to try to get a little bit better interest rates than we're currently getting in Star Ohio. Right now, in Star Ohio, we're getting about nine basis points, zero point nine percent. And I think through Red Tree, we're getting closer to thirty-five basis points, uh, zero point three five percent. So it doesn't sound like a lot, but, you know, on that kind of money, it does add up, and, you know, we try to utilize it the best we can and try to get what we can get out of it. Um, on tonight's agenda is a resolution accepting amounts and rates. Uh, it's a resolution we get from the county auditor every December, and it has, basically lists all of our levies and gross tax rates. Um, I haven't seen what our effective tax rates are gonna be yet, based on our new valuation from the three-year update. But, uh, for a substitute levy and a debt levy, your gross rate and your effective rate are the same. Uh, so our substitute levy, just kind of see how that affects us. It went from four point one six mil rate down to three point seven. And our debt, uh, levy, so phase one of the facilities plan from two thousand and sixteen, went from, uh, one point five eight to one point three five. So that means our, our valuation went up about fifteen percent. So it's been interesting, it's interesting to see how our, our total tax rate comes out, and how we compare to the other districts.
Gary, the original rate on the bond for the construction progress, or projects that we did was one point nine, and it's now what?
Uh, one point three five.
Thank you.
And that's a result of increased, uh, valuation of the new construction, increased values, and, uh, from the refinancing we did in December of two thousand and nineteen. Um, last month I mentioned that, uh, you know, Riversdale was listed on the delinquent tax listing, uh, because we had a few parcels that became taxable due to improvements. Uh, our legal counsel has filed the exemption application to get those back into exempt, uh, status, so that the auditor's office will receive those tomorrow. And then also, uh, they're going to prepare a property tax exemption for the parcel next door that we purchased, and get that filed as well. I also, uh, submitted an application today to Painsville Township to rezone the house next door uh, from residential, single-family to community service, because Painsville Township has a designated zoning for, for school districts and other government agencies, so I put that request in today. Uh, they will have it on their January meeting, and then, and on February fourteenth, on Valentine's Day, uh, when they should officially approve the rezoning, so if you're looking for something to do for Valentine's Day, it might be, uh, something to consider.
Do we have sort of a meeting in January? Like, do we actually have to attend to something?
They said there's really no need for us to attend, it, it, the planning commissioner, uh, over there, because I don't see any reason why there'd be any issue, because we surround all sides of that parcel, and they don't see any, anticipate any issues. And, you know, if you call, when we, when we sold, had, and rezoned in the back, there was no issues with that as well, so. Well, I think it was rezoned in the front too, but, you know, things went pretty smoothly. Um, also, we, uh, Tuesday, the administration did a final walkthrough of Leroy, just to ensure that we got all of the equipment and stuff out of the building that, and furniture that we wanted to save. Um, Painsville Township, or Leroy Township will take possession of whatever's left behind. Uh, I know they talked about, you know, some of the chairs that, that we don't need, though we are looking at donating to, to preschools or other entities that, that they see fit. Um, and lastly, under the buildings and grounds organizational part of the meeting, we have to set a date for the organizational meeting. So I didn't know if we wanted to do that now, or if we wanted to do it when we get there, if we ever did it now, we can fill it in and approve that. We'll get to that agenda.
We're gonna do it now, yep. When does it have to be done by, remind me?
We have to be, I don't know, before January fifteenth, which is a Saturday, so anytime before then.
We're gonna do the first week, the first full week of January, that week, and the third one, we're all back when the kids are back in school and all that? Looking at January, we're sticking with Thursday, it's January sixth?
Yeah, so, I, I'm ten, ten will be out of town on the sixth.
Okay.
The sixth through the, you can't.
Yeah, let's, you only do it through the town. And I cannot do the eleventh through the seventeenth.
Oh.
Can we do the third, the fourth, the fifth? The fourth, fifth?
Can we do Monday the third?
I can't.
I, I can either.
Tuesday? I can't do Tuesdays or Wednesdays.
Morning?
I can do morning.
There's no, there's no reason why we can't do in the morning, right?
Yeah, I can do mornings any day.
Any day. I feel like, we don't have to come to a meeting at night. Awesome.
So I, if we're doing the morning, the 4th and the 5th would work for me in the, in the morning.
I don't know if I have a calendar.
She's going.
That's different. I, I have meetings that work on the 4th and the 5th in the morning, so I wouldn't be able to, unfortunately. Do any day you guys want?
What about Friday the 7th in the morning? You just say, Tom, you say you're out of town?
Yeah, so at this point, I'm out of town from the 6th through the, through the 10th.
Okay, so the morning of the 11th or the morning of the 12th?
So then those would work for me, either of those.
It's PE season for me, so my mornings, like, my calendar beginning of January is, is full, so it's very challenging. You said the 11th or the 12th? Lunchtime? Are you ready for lunch?
Yeah.
I can try to make it. Would you say the 12th?
In the morning? We could do early, like 7:00?
Well, yeah, I, I can make the 12th work. I can move a couple meetings and try to make the 12th work. I prefer after 7:30, because I have a kid, I'm, yeah, about to get out the door. Scotty, you open the 12th?
I'm going to be out of town.
Uh-oh.
Ouch.
No.
Lunch? Anybody for lunch?
What about Saturday the 8th? We did, we saw some Saturday meetings. Oh, you're out, then, okay. And then I leave the next day to, then I'm in Vegas.
What was the first week in the morning? That was good. Are you in town the first week?
I'm in town the whole first week.
I, I'm just evaluating which one. I can try to make the 5th work.
What do you, what do you think the odds are of making the 5th work?
I will make the 5th work, when you put it that way. But again, after 7:30, preferably 8, I mean, would be perfect, because I just didn't have to get here. Maybe we have to have the tax, the tax budget meeting. We generally have that right before, like, the two minutes.
We could probably still do the tax budget at 7:45.
Right, or whatever, you know, and then, right, there's no voting.
I mean, the tax budget meeting takes like three seconds.
Yes, there's no voting.
Is that where we get that, start at 7:45?
Can we start at 8? Yes, I can start at 8.
8, 1:00, where to go?
Seriously, that meeting only takes like three minutes.
Literally.
We could, we could just do it 8 o'clock, tax budget hearing, and then just do.
8:05.
8:05, literally.
It does take longer than the five minutes, then we can, you know, we can start when, when that time comes.
So you agree on 8:00 AM on January 5th, correct?
That's what we said. Write it down.
Making sure we all agreed on that.
That'll be a first. For the organization meeting to have the morning, we didn't want to have done that before.
Well, we've done some crazy meetings, though. Who thought that was going to be that difficult?
I'm going to ask everybody, though, to come with their calendars, like, what day would be best for meetings and whatever, and have that already, like, planned out, because we do like to have our meetings on the same day, every, have, like, the same set time, and so make sure that your calendars are, you know, that you have the best.
Yes.
Guess.
Correct.
I mean, at the end of the day, I know that I plan, I plan my life around these meetings, and so that always goes on my calendar first while I'm trying to plan out the rest of the year, so if we can do that, that would be awesome.
Yep. Anything else in your report, Mr. Platko?
So I'll have.
All right, that takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves in their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. All right, that then takes us to consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any consent agenda item can be removed and voted on individually. First up will be finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit. Consent agendas recommended by the treasurer, items A through H. Do you have a second?
A second.
A few. I would just like to read and thank those individuals and organizations who gave donations. We have $11,300 and some change from the Gridiron Club for some additional coaching for the 21-22 school year, and we have $400 from the Mentor Rotary to the Drama Fund, so I'd like to thank them, especially that Gridiron, thank you so much. Is there any discussion on the items A through H? If not, can you call the role, Mr. Platko?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Belinda Gressi?
Aye.
Motion carried. We also have a resolution to accept the following donation, $100 from Eugene and Jennifer Harden to the Bieber Nation store. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'm assuming there's no discussion, so we can call the role.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
abstain.
Belinda Gressi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Personnel?
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agendas recommended by the superintendent, items A through G.
Second.
Mr. Heck? Is there any discussion on those items? All right, well, then if not, can we call the role, Mr. Platko?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Belinda Gressi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Curriculum and programming.
Motion to approve the items on the curriculum and programming consent agenda, item A, as recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? All right, can you call the role, please?
Belinda Gressi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye. Motion carried. Buildings and grounds.
Okay, so we have two sections to the buildings and grounds. The first one is items A through E, so a motion to approve the items listed on buildings and grounds, consent agenda, items A through E, as recommended by the superintendent.
Can we change the agenda item to say 8 o'clock on the 5th?
Right.
Because it says 6:45.
Yeah, yeah, 8:45, so 8 o'clock on January 5th.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right. Any, any discussion? All right, Terry Nutt, can you call the role, please?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Lori Krenisky?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Belinda Gressi?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, so this, this one is, is different than what we typically have, but we have another item for the consent agenda. It's item G on the buildings and grounds. And may I have a, a second, please?
I'll second that.
Terrific. So, Mrs. Harden, you, I think you were kind of driving this, can you explain what, what's, what the circumstances are?
Yeah, we had been made aware of a elected official that wanted to come in to do a swearing in at our January board meeting. And being a nonpartisan board, after talking to our legal counsel and things like that, we thought that it would be a nice idea to memorialize the fact that Mr. Platko always is who traditionally has always sworn in all of our new board members, that we didn't want to start going down this path of bringing in different people and things like that and keeping it consistent across the board, and by doing that, making it memorializing the fact that it's our treasurer's job to do that, and that would be who'd be doing our swearing in permanently.
Okay. In, in this circumstance, this is an emergency, we're declaring an emergency, which I actually thought that the verbiage would be incorporated, incorporated here, so I don't have it in front of me, but it's, we have to declare an emergency of welfare for the, welfare and safety of the, of the.
I don't, I don't know how that was determined, that kind of language that was through Mr. McIntyre.
Yeah, so I, but I think that's part of the law, to have an emergency, we have to declare an emergency of either welfare or safety of the students and the, and the employees. How do, how do we justify that?
I believe it's, I believe that according to Mr. McIntyre, that this was, if you want to pass something in one read, it has to be, it was just listed, it listed as emergency. He, that was, that's his recommendation.
But the definition of an emergency is, is it jeopardizes the welfare and the, or the safety of the, of the students and personnel.
There was more to it, and I'd have to pull it up, because I don't have it in front of me.
Mr. Heck, are you getting at that if it doesn't jeopardize the safety or welfare of the student, that we should go through our normal policy revision process? I think that's what you're trying to do.
Exactly. I just, I'm having difficulty approving an emergency when there does not appear to be one. There may be desire, but there's, there's not an emergency.
I don't, I don't know what is.
Well, I think it's probably law. If you're going to, I think it's law, that if you want to present and approve a policy in the same meeting, you have to declare an emergency by law. And so that law would be, there's a, a welfare or safety issue that affects the students and the employees of the district. So that, to me, is, is just not the circumstance here.
I think the policy's worth looking at and considering changes too, but again, I, when I read it and I went over it and I actually called and asked some additional questions, I get some of the same concerns, is that we're going outside of what we normally do. And in order to do that, I think we have to make sure that we can justify why. Again, I think we should look at the policy and consider, do we want to memorialize that and make sure that we definitely are staying with that for a reason? But I think we also need to consider, is there ever a reason why we wouldn't also have Gary, Mr. Platko, be the person who swears everybody in? I don't know, I'm just trying to think through that future-wise, as we take a look at changing that policy possibly.
Right, and just, I mean, I, we are, we are not actually talking about the motion, or the, the policy itself, but just along those lines, from the OSBA, the Ohio School Board Association says, you may give the oath of office, the oath may be given by a number of people, including the treasurer and other current board member, any elected of office holder who has office, whose office has jurisdiction over the territory of the school district, a noted republic, or a member of the General Assembly. So, so, you know, we would be far more restrictive, excuse me, than law and, and what is interpreted by the, the OSBA. So, and then, also, it's not stated here, I didn't find it, but it's just that from a preliminary perspective, my understanding is that, that we would need a super majority out of the five in order to pass this, which would mean four out of the five would have to, to approve that. Is that correctly understood?
Yeah, because the oath is a bylaw on the board, our other bylaw on the board says it requires a super majority, four votes of the five-member board. Policy changes, if it's just a policy, it's only three votes, but when it's a bylaw, change requires.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, be that as it may, like, whatever that, whatever that happens to end up being, I still feel like we should look at the policy. Again, I'm not, I'm not a fan of political posturing by, you know, county officials or any other officials coming here to do the job that we have traditionally given to our treasurer. I feel like it, it lessens, I think, what we do here in a little bit of a way, and, and I just want to make sure that, that folks understand why we're looking at doing something like that.
Well, I agree, and it's, it's problematic for me that any kind of elected official that's had nothing to do with our district in any way, shape, or form, never supported us, never even shown any type of attendance in anything ever decides that this is the time to be involved with Riverside. I think it's in poor taste, quite honestly, and it, we, you know, we all spent this last couple months dealing with this entire idea of having to prove that boards are supposed to be nonpartisan, and that's the way that it should be when it comes even, you know, to me, having Mr. Platko and having a member of our board, a part of our team swearing us in, is more important than someone coming in from the outside who's never had anything to do with us coming in to do it, because I don't, and he didn't even ask, quite honestly, ask our board, didn't ask our administration, nothing like that occurred. So to me, that is just in poor taste, and I wanted to protect, I think it's important to protect our traditions, and I think it's important to not take away from what we think is a really, I don't know, to me, it's an impactful thing that our treasurer does.
Okay. I'll check with you.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, I question why right now, too, it's never happened before, so I question the why. I just, again, when I look at what we're doing or how it's been written, I, that's where I struggle, is that it's not, to me, an emergency. I don't disagree, why now? Why, does somebody want to comment, swear in our, our board members, but?
But it's not our board members, it's a plural.
A board member, but again, I, questioning why is one thing, I, but the way, I, I think we have to follow our normal policy process to try to get the change through, if we think that's the right thing to do.
Yeah, and I, I definitely agree. I guess I would say that there, there's certainly nothing unethical about this, there's nothing illegal about this.
No.
And, and certainly, a, you know, we, everybody who, everybody worked hard, whether they got elected or not, but, but certainly, as people earn their seat, as determined by the voters, why shouldn't they have the full scope of what's available to them under the law? And, and, and the, the other thing I would say is that, I, I mean, I understand what your, what your perspective is, but the, the organizational meeting is not taped, it's not a public, it's not, it's, it's a public announcement, but it's not on our website, it's not, it's not a prominent, it's not prominent in, in how we communicate to the.
Oh, I understand, yeah.
So, so to me, the, the, the impact of any particular, particular leanings is the minimus, because it is, you know, other than family members, nobody comes. So.
Mrs. Parkin comes everything. Don't think Gina, oh, that was.
So anyway, so, but I, you know, I, that's to be obviously addressed next term, so. But now before us is the, the first step would be to determine, this is, this vote is to determine if there's an emergency. I, I know where I stand, I, is any other discussion?
I don't have any.
If not, Mr. Platko, can you call the role, please?
Lori Krenisky?
Nay.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Belinda Gressi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Nay.
No. That takes us to the Board of Education update, if anyone has anything. I just wanted to congratulate our Riverside eighth-grade basketball team for winning the WRC championship today. That was their second year in a row of taking the championship, and that's a, it was an exciting game, they won 62 to 44 today, so, that was great, it was exciting.
I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, because when we come together again, it's going to be 2022, where does the time go?
Mrs. Malacar and I will have our kids graduating this year.
It's, I think it's the third one.
Oh, believe it, by the time I get to college, I'd be like, see ya.
So Dr. Kales has, has brought up something that, that had occurred to me previously, that by golly, 2022 is my 40th anniversary of graduating from Riverside, 40th.
You're old.
I am old, but, you know, my, my chassis is still, still functioning, so.
Mr. Heck, I don't think you're the only one at the board table that's seven to 40th.
No, no, he graduated, like, we graduated.
It's because of the 21 years.
We graduated different years.